If you could, just to make sure you're on stage. What your voice got to be.
Sidney Bartle, 71 Wallace Street. Before I even begin, I would like to bring to make a point at the December 4th council meeting where a resolution was brought up where the council pledges to take action to protect the natural resources of the state for environmental, recreational, and agricultural value. I just want to bring that up. So here we are pledging that we are going to protect these, recrete recreational, agricultural, environmental areas, and you're looking to take these things off the Rossi. I just want to remind people that Lot 4, right here, where this green spaces is where we had wanted to put the community garden, and we were told by the council, no, we couldn't put it there. And we asked why, they wouldn't tell us, but I knew why, because they want to sell this, you know, this is my opinion, that they don't want us on there because-
I will say it one more time.
Uh-oh, you're interrupting me.
No, you're saying something that is not-
I'm saying it's my opinion.
These are comments.
Thank you.
You're correct, okay.
Okay. In my opinion, you didn't want to see us down there because you saw what we did to Maple Cove and how successful it's become. And if you let the garden people on 94th front, we would have made that fabulous, and it would have created an agricultural use that would have been great with DEP, and they wouldn't even be entertaining the thought of taking off that parcel of land if we had had a garden on there, and if we had been using that for a community garden. Okay, with that said, I want to go on because I feel that what we need to prove here tonight is that Red Bank is saying that these properties were put on by mistake. They have been revised, modified, updated, nine times at least, by different administrators before yourself, Mr. Sickles. There were handwritten notes, they were, like the other gentlemen said, different blocks were moved around, they were changed from Maple Avenue Boat Facility to Maple Avenue Open Space, and these were done specifically for the Rossi. This was no mistake. These borough administrators took their time. These McKenna, and McKenna signed off on these, Christine, she signed off on these. This was not a mistake. You were part of this, and for 2008 and 2009. And to say that this is a mistake, I just think that, you know, that is just something that I have to prove against. So real quick, what I want to start off with is the history of this lot. This lot has been around since 1970. It was owned by Irwins. It was a vacant lot. It was used to store boats for many years. I have code enforcement after code enforcement about the trash in the yard and how badly it's being kept, and, let's see, it's referred to as a vacant lot. Finally, in 85, Irwins, who owned it, leased it to Avis Rent-A-Car, and Avis rough graded and black topped a portion of the lot. So that's really as far as this thing ever got. There was no curbing, there was no black topping, it was a black top portion of this lot. Okay. Then we start talking about when these properties came on the Rossi. Well, in 1985, they were used to help with a Mohawk Pond development project, and they were used for the Eastside Park development. And when the town listed these properties, they were listed under undeveloped park and recreation lands. Park name, Maple Avenue Boat Launch Facility, Block 8, Lot 1. Okay? And this is 88. Here it is, undeveloped park and recreation lands. Here it is in the 85 Rossi. Now, I don't know why it's on here, but I do know that by the time you got the first funding for Mohawk Pond and Eastside Park, you were in ownership of this property, and that's what really counts. Again, Eastside Park Development, and again, undeveloped lands owned by local unit and designated for open space recreation or conservation purposes. Maple Avenue Boat Launch, Lot 8, Lot 1. So when you say that these lands were never designated, you know, and then to your comment that you bought these lots for parking for the library, well, I think you bought these lots because the developer went belly up, and you could catch two waterfront lots for $25,000. I mean, anybody would have picked it up. And the fact that the lot was right next to the library offered parking for the library, and that was great. I think the fact that it's surrounded by Hovnanian is a very telling, you know, is very telling as to why you are looking to take this off the Rossi. In 1995, here it is, we deleted Maple Avenue Boat Launch, Block 8, Lot 1. We deleted Maple Avenue Boat Launch, Block 8, Lot 3.02. Maple Avenue Boat Launch, Block 8, Lot 4.02. And then we added Maple Avenue Open Space, Block 8, Lots 1 and 1.02, which is the 25 acres. Okay? And that was our good old borough administrator Sally Levine. That was no mistake. That was no mistake. And something else I'd like to just put out there, in 19, when we found it, and you can go and say, Mr. Sickles, that it wasn't assessed, but it had been assessed, and that's what the mayor said. And again, you know, the council people sit up there, and they continually say to me, "We're not going to sell it, we're not going to sell it." Well, when we found it in 2008, six months prior to us finding it, I found a letter from Hovnanian asking the borough if they could buy it, okay?
If we were interested in selling.
Six months before I found it, okay? I think it was October. Then, let's see, was it seven days later? Seven days after you got the letter, Sharon Lee brought forth a resolution allowing Hovnanian to do contamination testing. And at that time, they cut down all the maple trees, and I thought Mr. Harmon was going to show us a picture of that, but they cut down all the maple trees that were down there. You know, so I see this as whatever. But anyway, my point here being was that, from a 2008 article, Mayor Pasquale Mena said the sale of the lot could help with tax relief for the 2008-2009 proposed budget, which calls for a 7.7 cent increase for $100 of assessed evaluation. He goes on to say, meanwhile, it is an underutilized asset. It has never been a utilized asset, and it's a valuable property that can give relief to our taxpayers, especially those who have very little. You know, it's not, and then Mr. Dupont, Mr. Dupont says, yes, this is not being used to their full potential like Maple Avenue. Okay. Now, if you wanted to sell it in 2008 because it was underutilized, why are you fighting and using taxpayer dollars to prove your claim that this is a public parking lot to DEP? I mean, I think this is a misuse of taxpayer money, and I think it's totally uncalled for.
If I could ask you one question?
Sure.
You said you have an appraisal?
I have articles that say-
No, no. Do you have an appraisal?
No, I don't have an appraisal, but I have articles that say it was appraised.
It was not appraised.
Well, I guess that's going to be disputed.
Show me appraisal, purchase order, a resolution authorizing the guy to do the work.
And also, I want to say this, nobody can-
How could you have that?
I know who did the work, I just don't remember his name. Again, I want to show this picture, and nobody can really see this, but if you could see what this parking lot looked like, you know, when we found it, you wouldn't want to park there. There was, it was terrible. And during, during the summer, you know, it was full of weeds down here, you wouldn't want to park down there. And I think, Mr. Sickles, that, you know, I think we all know that nobody parks down there, and you saying that the library uses it, well, maybe they used it when they were being renovated, and we were using Hovnanian's corner building, which has its own parking lot, by the way. But I think that we all know that nobody goes down there and parks. But be that as it may, it's constantly referred to as a vacant lot. We came to you with a resolution authorizing retention of Borough Waterfront Parcel. It was beautifully written, I had an attorney, I brought it to this council, you didn't want to hear it. That tells me something. That tells me that if you don't want to do a resolution on a piece of property, that, you know, obviously, you're not thinking about keeping that property. Okay. So then here we go, let's see, we've got a 2008 Rossi, Maple Avenue Open Space, 1.02, Maple Avenue Boat Launch, Lot 1, Maple Avenue Boat Launch, 1.01. Okay. And this is very interesting too. T&amp;M Associates, November 20th, 2008. In response to your recent request, the Borough of Red Bank has prepared an updated recreation and open space inventory. Two copies of the updated Rossi map are enclosed. Okay. Maple Avenue Boat Launch, Block 8. Lot 3.02 does not exist. Lot 8, Lot 4.02 does not exist. Block 8, Lot 1.01, which is the repairian grant associated with Block 8, Lot 1, is added. So, this is '08, and you added these to Lot 1. This is not a mistake, and if this is a mistake, then somebody should be fired because this is grossly-
Mismanaged.
Mismanaged, yeah. This is, this is, this is not a mistake. The updated Rossi reflects these corrections and additions. Okay? Christine Ballard, Pat Mena, Stanley Sickles. Okay, so we're just going to go through that-
And about the amendment was done by resolution, was it not?
That I don't know, Christine. All I, all I do is have the letters. But then again, in 2008, now here's something interesting. In the 2008 Rossi, somebody wrote, should library parking be listed on the Rossi? If so, should it be listed as P/O, which means "part of"? You're familiar with that? Okay. Did you write that? Did you put that in there? I'd like to know who did that, because whoever did that was a smart person, because that person knew that the parking lot next to the library should not be on the Rossi. And again, that is not a mistake. All right. Then we get to the master plan, where the master plan of the revised version of 2008, finally, the board recognizes the need for additional waterfront access, the foot of Maple Avenue, and the property at the foot of Sunset were discussed as possible candidates. And they said the same thing for the revised version. Then we get into the naming of Maple Cove, and how Councilwoman Lewis wanted to get the children involved in this waterfront property, in this recreational area, which, again, it's a recreational area. You called it, your council people called it, you had a naming contest using the children of Red Bank, and every recreational park needs a parking lot. And this is 10 parking places. It's not like it's 20. Again, we have a revision of the Rossi 2009, you know, Maple Avenue Boat Launch, Maple Avenue, blah, blah, blah. Oh, here's a letter from you, Mr. Sickles. Please be advised that the Parks and Rec Committee of the governing body shares a desire of you, and those Red Bank residents seek to create an appropriate public access to the Navasink River via the borough-owned property on Maple Avenue. That has always been the case and remains so. So you yourself say that that was an open space, it will always remain an open space, and it should remain an open space, and it needs to be kept on the Rossi, you know?
I have said, I continue to say, that access to the river should be maintained.
Okay, well, you know what, talk is cheap. If talk is, if you're going to talk the talk, you got to walk the walk.
I'm walking the walk.
Well, you know, it's not over until the fat lady sings. We want to count on the Rossi. That's what we want. And then again, we have the mayor talking about perpetuity, how it's going to stay, stay, and then, this is a very interesting article, or tidbit, where a person from the town wrote to Mr. Sickles, and Mr. Sickles wrote back, "Since the borough acquired the property some 30 years ago, it has always been the borough's intent to use the property to provide access to the river." Then he gets into early thoughts where to acquire additional property and create a boat launching ramp of additional type, but they weren't given the permission to do that, or they couldn't get the permits. So what Mr. Sickles finally says is the Maple Avenue property has always remained on the open space inventory and has always been earmarked for public use. You knew it was on the open space inventory.
And there are numerous documents-
Well, these are all letters and-
Exactly. You're reiterating what's been online, you're iterating that was public record, which is Rossi's.
I'm reiterating what you said to prove intent.
Exactly. And I've said what the intent is, and I repeated it, and-
Well, I'm repeating it.
And you're repeating exactly what I've been saying.
I am.
Why has, excuse me, what has changed since those things? Was a letter from the DEP saying we must restrict this parking.
Yes, but you knew, you knew it, you know-
Let me just put it in context. Yes, you can go back to 1980, we were talking about putting a boat ramp there, before we owned the property, before we, the borough. And I know, when you say "you," you're talking to the borough, thank you. But the point is, we, the borough has maintained it on the Rossi. It did not have a problem with it being on the Rossi. The problem now is, the DEP is saying, oh, wait a minute, you have to restrict the parking. That was a consequence that the borough was not aware of.
So you didn't know this, being the borough administrator, you were not aware of this?
I was not aware of the restriction with the parking for a property for which there was no green acres funding provided or used, and which the borough had yet to develop as a public space.
Okay, well-
All right? Wait, excuse me, simply, real quick here. That's what triggered the research to go back and look at the org, says, when did we buy it, were there any resolutions? And that's when we found, wait a minute, when we bought these properties, the organ says it was for parking for the library. That's what triggered it. If there was no trigger, we wouldn't be having this here.
Well, you know what, I disagree with that because I've got a letter here, after you started telling people that it was going to be my fault, that I was the one that caused all this problem in Marine Park. Marine Park is a whole different story from the library in Maple Cove. And while discussions about Marine Park have arisen due to green acres overall, look at the parking situation in Red Bank, a few years back, I'm not going to name his name, but a certain DEP person worked with the borough on the same parking issues at Marine Park. So you knew about this, Mr. Sickles, you knew about this parking issue. And you know what, I think you did, I think you turned a blind eye, and you finally got caught. That's what I think. And now you're scurrying around, and you're trying to make it right.
I'm not trying to make it right, I'm trying to do what the DEP has told us to do, to correct this issue.
Right.
And Marine Park is a separate issue. It involves other property owners.
You're bringing it up, you're bringing it up all night.
It's in the letter.
That's one letter. Yes, there's other ways of doing it, and this is really, I guess, what the bottom line is, Mr. Sickles, is, we all agree that, you know, the parking lot for the library should come off the Rossi. We want to see this land saved. I mean, we couldn't put the garden on it because as Kathy Horrigan, Councilwoman Horrigan and Lee said, it's the last public lot open to the, open to the public, and we have to keep it open. The only way to keep it open is to keep it on the Rossi, and you need to do that. And as far as Maple Cove goes, I just can't see how wanting to sell a never-used utilized asset, like that parking lot down there, and now all of a sudden, you're fighting to keep it, there's got to be something behind it, and you know what? I look to the money. Follow the money, and you see why you want to keep that. And I think that's, it's crystal clear. It was never in your parking inventory.
Yes, it was.
Well, you say it is, but I see, and it was just last year, you added it to the parking inventory, yes?
2001, August 20, 2001.
Well, how come I never got that?
That's part of the package.
I don't know, I never got that.
But it's absolutely separated from the SCAD document. Captain Erwin Van Pelt Traffic Safety and Parking Division gave a parking inventory in which that property was listed.
Well, why is it when I Oprah'd, who bought permits? Because, you know, there was, there were permit parking signs down there, and I want to bring that to everybody's attention too. There were permit parking signs, but they were permit parking signs for the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Okay? Now, again, you need to look at this and see what this parking lot looked like. There was no curbing, it was gravel, you know, and then it's got permit parking signs, and it's clear, and the DEP is aware of the fact that they used this parking lot for staging area and a dump. You know, Mr. Sickles is slapping our hands for cleaning over a soil pile, but that soil pile is an illegal dump that Hovnanian just dumped on the, on borough property. So we may have been cleaning the knotweed way to get to the river, but here you had a whole dump, Mr. Sickles.
Ms. Burton, there's no proof that Hovnanian dumped that there.
Really?
There is no proof that Hovnanian dumped that there.
Okay.
And you make an allegation in public that is not substantiated.
Okay, well, how about when I saw the borough dump on Hovnanian's property?
The-
Did you?
I'm sorry, but, but it's true, it's true.
Hey.
Okay.
I think we'll do it inside. We go through all these details, and we could be here until 1:00.
I know, but I've got to get these things on the record, Mike.
You can, you can submit them, right?
Okay, all right, let me see, if there's anything else that I want to, I just want to say that when I did my Oprah to find out who was permit parking and what kind of revenues came back, Gary Watson said I, he has no, what did he say here? I got it. He said that he had no record of who bought permit parking, and there is no record of any kind of revenue collected from that, so-
But we did have the August 20th report, 2001, from Captain Van Pelt, that listed Maple Cove parking lot, and listed that there were 12 permits issued for that lot as part of the parking inventory.
Do you have names?
No, we don't have names. It says, we don't have names for any of the permits that were issued in any of the lots, but it says parking lot number 10, Maple Avenue, total of 12 spaces, handicap zero, priority permit spaces 12, no mirrors in this lot, and it's from Captain Erwin Van Pelt, who's still alive and can very easily come and testify.
Well, how come I never got that? I mean, when I asked for the permits and the revenue generated-
Well, I believe you did, and this has been online.
Well, I can't see that online, let me tell you, it's very little. One more thing, the DEP has told Red Bank, and this is another thing, you know, you're trying to make DEP look like the bad guy, but DEP has told you, this is not an all-or-nothing scenario. This is from the DEP woman. I believe I had had discussions with Christine and/or Lori, who was the environmental consultant that was hired through T&amp;M to find documents to substantiate Red Bank's claim, but they talk about the borough considering, that the borough should only consider removing those portions unused for parking, that they should retain those, leaving the lands at and below the high tide line on the Rossi. Okay? And there's a few different-
And that was specifically with regard to Lot 1, those comments.
Yes. And there's multiple, there are multiple emails that say that, this is not an all-or-nothing.
And we say that.
Okay, so then, why don't you just agree to us and make us all happy, so we can go home tonight and sleep, that you are going to subdivide Lot 4 and just take a parking lot? And why, who is going to park in 10 spaces that at Maple Cove? And please don't say the library, because we all know the library people do not park down there. Who, who parks down there?
Amazons?
Well, yes, they use it for their visitors' parking because their visitors don't have a key to get into their parking garage, so yes, they park there.
That's speculation.
I've seen it.
Oh, I don't know that.
Well, I do, and I mean-
Right now, the problem, the problem being, right now, when nobody's using watching kayaks, or at times when nobody's using kayaks, if we don't remove this restriction, then the park, the lot, is not available to anybody.
And there's nobody down there.
Somebody wants to go down and just walk by the work.
They can park there, they can park there. There is no reason that this, that this has to be a public parking lot, there is absolutely no reason, it was always a vacant lot, I disagree with your permits, I, I wouldn't venture to say that they're fabricated. I know, sorry, but I-
So you're accusing the police captain of fabricating a report in 2001.
I'm not accusing, in my opinion, in my opinion, and I can say that, it's my opinion, because I didn't get that information. Nobody sent that when I filled out my Oprah report.
You asked for names of people who had permits.
Right, and the revenue generation.
And the rest, which we did not have from 2001.
Well, I should have gotten something regarding permits, if you had something.
I don't, I don't know the details that you requested, I would deal with the clerk, but that information I don't have.
Well, you know what we all want here, we want, we want the land portion saved in Lot 4, and we want all of Lot 1 saved, and to stay on the Rossi. I think that's pretty much what we all want, right.
Thank you. I would just want to clarify with that. With regard to your comments about the resolution with regard to contamination, the Hovnanian people had marked, were marking the front property, the property that fronts on Front Street at Maple Avenue. They found contamination on that property. They hired an environmental company to mitigate that contamination. The environmental company suggested that that contamination may have spread beyond the property line, and therefore, they sought an easement from the borough to conduct testing at their expense to ensure that there's no contamination in the borough property. So the actions with regard to allowing them have access was in regard to the cleanup of potential contamination caused by their property owner.
And who cut the trees down?
I imagine the environmental people were to do that testing. Or perhaps, 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 I, listen, I don't know, speculation.
But you were the borough administrator during this time, you should have known.
It was part of that assessment, they had to remove soil, they had to remove contamination, and bar that removal may have required the trees to be removed.
Entire lot, mature trees?
Yeah, yeah. But, okay, that's all I have to offer.
Okay, any other statements? Statements, no more questions, statements. Go back.
Good evening, Jennifer Garen, 600 Oakland Street. I too would like to see the property kept intact, aside from, I understand, the lot next to the library. And I believe that having the lot at the foot of Maple Avenue kept intact with the land and the adjoining land, if that's part of the river access, having that parking there is what makes it accessible for people. Additionally, when I'm normally in this room, I seem to find myself here for more zoning board meetings, and often, they've let large developments pass with virtually no green space, citing all of the parks that we have available. So while only a few projects have broken ground, we have approval out there for hundreds of new residents. So to say that the zoning board is saying this because it's allowing, because of our parkland, and then another arm of the borough seeking to remove recreational areas, says to me that the borough's not following unified vision, and what says that to me even more is, we have, I mean, our council and our mayor have been very vocal and demonstrative about all their fitness initiatives, so if they feel the parking's being underutilized, perhaps then they might instead see how can we fill this up and keep our people moving and keep them healthy. I would be very disappointed if the parking lot, if the parking lot was made public, I think instead we should work on filling it with people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more, slide 39. Yes, former mayor.
I have a statement which I really love.
Give your name and your address.
Yes, Mike Farm, 33 Bonnie Brook, Pat, Land Collins, New Jersey. As I mentioned, there's a mayor and councilman in the- As I mentioned, he's a mayor and councilman and has been a park commissioner for 25 years. I have a statement which I was going to give to you. I've been involved with this for quite a long time, even before Cindy and everyone, because what happened is CBA had come to the Mountain County Park Commission after being asked to leave Red Bank, and we found a home for them, for their crew team, down in the Hallow Reservoir. I've also personally been using this site for over 30, over 30 years. I grew up on the Middletown side, but it used to live in Red Bank, and had a little duck boat, and used it for fishing and soft-shell crabbing and that sort of thing. And then, a few years ago, I saw an ad, I saw an ad in the newspaper about a cleanup, and that's where I came, and I met a tremendous amount of people, led by Ms. Barham and a lot of other folks, that were cleaning the site. I'm just going to read part of my statement here. And I've worked on this for a long time, a few years now, and we've handled a lot of projects. There's another one called Bradley Cove and Asbury Park, very similar. And what happens is, the people get the idea that public officials are removing public access to the waterfront, whether it's oceanfront or riverfront. But a lot of good things have come out of Maple Cove, and I want to share them with you as well. Maple Cove is a perfect little park, offering access to miles of the beautiful Navisink, magnificent, seawine wildlife. Maple Cove is the only spot near town that I know of where you can stick your toes in the water and see the red sands that inspired the town's name, Red Bank. Maple Cove parking is an essential part of that waterfront access, particularly with the use of crew boats, kayaks, canoes, and paddle...